Call to order an recording of members present and absent.
Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement?
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the office of the superintendent.
Thank you, Terry. Item number three, consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Are there any additions of items of new business to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Minutes of the November seventh, 2022, regular meeting, approval of the finance report, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity funds and fundraisers, and approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, approval of the child nutrition report, and the items of declared items of surplus.
Okay, so agenda item three point two, October third, 2022, regular meeting minutes. See any errors to those? Agenda item three point three, our investments are all current and up to date. That's your top attachment. On your second attachment, provided you with the monthly look at our chargeable funds. You can see on our chargeable funds that we are at two hundred and thirty-four thousand approximately in our gross production. We continue to lag behind collections in our motor vehicle packs, which we anticipate. REA, school land earnings, and county four mil are still where they need to be. You'll notice county four mil is still below our year-to-date collections. That will pick up as we begin collecting over the months of December and January for add-to-war tax. You look at the next page, you have chart representation of those collections. You can see that we have improved collections in both of those. If you look on the following page, I've done the chart by number, and we have collected two hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight, ninety-two more than FY twenty-two. We have spent three hundred and sixty thousand more. Attribute a lot of that spending to inflationary costs, your electrical, those sorts of things. Activity fund report. No major changes to activity funds, activity fund accounts. Appreciate Mr. Durkey's work in that area. If you will look at, there is no agenda item three point five fundraisers for this month. If you will look at-
Mr. Durkey, I think you're on the wrong one.
The wrong?
Meeting.
Meeting?
Yeah.
I still have a strategy out here. Up there, now we're not, aren't we?
You guys are on the right one. He's on November.
Well.
It's okay.
It's okay. That's the same anyway.
Yeah, that's interesting. Those numbers didn't look right to me. Okay, so let's back up.
We're looking at the right things.
You guys are on the right one, but I think his screen is on the wrong one. Now we're right.
Should be right.
You're right.
Okay.
Now that's, yeah.
So we have November seventh minutes.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Has everyone reviewed those?
Yes.
Are there any issues?
No.
Okay. Finance report. Okay, let me make this one a little bit larger, so, okay. Yeah, so you can see there's quite a bit of difference there from one month to the next. You look at our gross production, four hundred thousand for this month. Motor vehicle tax still behind. You can see our REA tax, school land earnings and stuff, and then we did receive a collection this month from our county four mil. So we are above collections in all areas. Okay, let's look at the chart on the next page. If you look year-to-date at the chart, you can see November is collections, this November are above last month collections. And then number comparison, yeah, let's read this one. This one's a lot better. You've got FY twenty-three collections, seven hundred and forty-three thousand more than we collected last year. We spent four hundred and fourteen more than we did as compared to FY twenty-one. Okay, activity fund reports. If you'll open up those attachments, all activity funds are in good standing for the month of November. And then if you look at fundraisers, we have one activity fundraiser for board approval. This fundraiser occurred this past month. Penny wore a collection done at the middle school for donation. Mrs. Martini, appreciate her and Mrs. Thomas working on this, and we'll make sure prior to the next fundraiser, we receive board approval before that occurs. Interaccount transfers. We have one interaccount transfer. This is the Lincoln color run by our elementary schools. All of the funds raised from entry fees and registration, sponsors were deposited into the activity account for Lincoln Elementary. From that account, we're distributing that money back out to Washington and Longfellow. And so you can see the distribution amongst all three elementary schools, three thousand seven hundred and fourteen oh seven. Appreciate the elementary principals' teachers' work on this. Want to highlight Miss Webster. I think this was her year to be in charge, and they did an outstanding job with the color. Child nutrition report. You look year-to-date at our child nutrition report, if you'll open that attachment, we saw a dip in serving lunches last month. You can see that has gone back up again, but we have seen a slight decrease in our breakfast from one month to the next. Continue to hear positives about our order ahead program at our middle school and high school. Many students taking advantage of that option. Agenda item three point eight, there are no items of surplus. Any questions regarding the consent agenda?
Oh, that was a nice fundraiser. Probably used a lot of work, but it just didn't work. Feels like it. I'm doing a kind of motion, concerning consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve three point one. The two point eight is presented. I'm second in motion.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for physical year twenty-three. Four point one, general fund as referenced, four point two, building fund as referenced, and four point three, child nutrition fund as referenced.
Okay, agenda item four point one, if you'll open the top attachment, our general fund purchase orders for the month of November. I'll read through a couple of those. Purchase order number three thirty-three, Oklahoma FFA, one thousand three hundred and sixty-five, FFA membership dues. Purchase order number three thirty-nine, one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight twenty. Those are art supplies that we purchased from Mr. McClure's art class. Purchase order number three forty, that is the encumbrance for Kyler Construction and our HVAC, eight hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and twelve sixty-one. Purchase orders number three forty-five and three fifty-six, Jostens and Quaid School Products, one thousand thirty-eight twenty-four and one thousand three seventy-five. Those are graduation supplies for this coming school year. Purchase order number three forty-seven, Meta Dot Software for our IT department, one thousand three hundred and forty-seven sixty. Meta Dot helps with our help desk and also asset management. Purchase order number three forty-eight, ABC Companies. Those are repairs to the Activity Coach Bus, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-two seventy-six. The transmission was replaced. The four-way flasher was also repaired, AC system, exhaust pipe, and four new tires. Purchase order number three forty-nine, one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two forty-six. That is to purchase some software for our ELL program in the district. This software is going to help facilitate learning plans for our ELL students and relieve a little bit of that pressure off our ELL teacher in that paperwork. Any questions about general fund four point one? Our payroll, the second attachment, those are substitute payroll for the month of November. Four point two, our building fund, through these purchase orders. Purchase order number thirty-nine and forty, our district custodial supplies, maintenance supplies. Thirty-nine with Jenkins and Price, we spent one thousand two hundred and thirteen oh seven. And then with Treat Solutions, we spent three thousand eight hundred and eighty-six. If you look at purchase order number forty-one, Kyler Construction, two hundred and sixteen thousand, one fifteen thirty-nine, that is also an encumbrance as part of that previous purchase order. So the general fund purchase order is reimbursable through S R Funds, so we'll be reimbursed for that. The two hundred and sixteen thousand is building fund money that we will pay, and that will be our share. So we'll be reimbursed for the previous PO, and this PO will come out of our building fund. That will cover the cost of the project. Purchase order number forty-two, Top Choice Mechanical, that's a thousand dollars for some repair and maintenance to the boiler here at the high school. Okay, agenda item four point three, our child nutrition fund. We have one purchase order out of that fund for the month. Purchase order number twenty-one, hot shot power washing, cleaning for kitchen hoods across the district. Any questions regarding purchase orders from our general fund, building fund, or child nutrition fund? There are none, I would recommend they're approved.
Make a motion, we approve the purchase order encumbrances for four point one, general fund, four point two, building fund, and four point three, child nutrition fund.
Second.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item number five, superintendent's report.
Okay, we'll begin first with our resignations, retirements, and reassignments. We have one resignation effective December eighteenth for Jennifer Taylor. She has assisted in our basketball program at the high school and our softball program. She's been a real integral part of both of those programs, and we will really miss her. They have an opportunity as a family, move closer to home, and we're sure nothing else matters. Agenda item five point two, part of our requirement for accreditation is two percent, our dropout and remediation report. So I have provided an attachment there for you to review. We had one dropout for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Appreciate the work that Mrs. Smithy has done to update those files and be aware of transfers. You'll notice that we are still a year behind in our remediation report. This report's obtained from the state regions, and they don't have the twenty-one, twenty-two data. It lags a year behind, and so we'll get that data next year. You can see that going into the twenty-twenty-one school year, we had twenty-nine freshman students. So those are full-time enrolled students at state universities. Those are what are counted on this remediation report. We had no students that needed to take any remediation classes in English or science. We had six students that were required to take remediation classes, which means a zero level course for remediation. You look at reading, and we had zero there. Present this each year. You have to remember when you look at those numbers, you're not always going to get your out-of-state students. You're not going to get a part-time student. And depending on how many hours someone is going to take at a university, that's going to dictate whether they show up on this report. Can see that we've made some improvements in some areas, continue to need to make some improvements. With all of these, any questions on the remediation report?
Does this remediation report, how does it factor in students taking these classes concurrently? What category?
Well, it's a great question.
If a junior is taking one of these, taking Comp One versus, I don't know, beginning with interviewing English.
I don't have an answer for that, but I can find an answer, but I would think-
I don't think, I don't think they're competing.
I don't think it would be in here, Shane, because they wouldn't, they wouldn't meet the full-time student requirement.
Okay, because?
So I don't think they would be factored in. But I don't know where those hours go if a full-time student takes those with them, or if a student takes those concurrent enrollment hours with them into college, if that's factored in with it, or where they fall. I'll do some check, I'll call and do some checking on that. It's a good question. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, agenda item five point three, communication for this month. Mrs. Lovelace has a good special education monitoring report that we will present in January to the board. Want to remind the board, we will be opening bids for the cafeteria, two o'clock tomorrow, in the high school cafeteria, and then in hopes of bringing those bids to the board in January. Twenty-two, twenty-three district teacher of the year, Cecily Franz, so want to congratulate her and communicate that to you all as a board. And also our rising star of the district is Maester. So congratulation to them, and they've done an outstanding job. Agenda item five point four, we'll start first with Mrs. Webster and I. We're going to go over a little bit, we're kind of a combined presentation on culture and community and an update on our previous facilities meeting. So I will let Mrs. Webster come up here. I'll kind of move out of the way, yes.
Culture and community is one of the ones on this transition plan that is very broad. So we've kind of narrowed it down to just a few certain things that we're going to talk about. The discipline committee, we do have, we have updated that list, and it is current with our new principals, teachers, and parents from each of our buildings. We have not met yet. We will be meeting at some point this year. Then, looks like two point one, three. This is something that I think we are very proud of, our improvement plan that we have at each of our buildings. The elementary really works on, well, actually, they all are working on P B I S, which is positive behavior intervention supports. The elementaries are pretty close in what we do as far as we give gotchas to individual students. Those gotchas then are turned into rewards where they, some of them, they pull from different gotchas. Some of them, their names go in a list, and then they get different prizes and awards throughout the week. We also have character award winners. I know at Lincoln, we do pride. I think there's different character traits that each of our buildings give specific awards at different pride assemblies or assemblies throughout the building. We all kind of do that differently, but follow the same guidelines. A lot of positive postcards are sent home just to let parents know what great things our kiddos are doing. The middle school kind of does the same thing, and on a smaller scale, they promote a student of the month program, and they highlight different students. Students can just be drawn from that once each month. They have show passes when they see students meeting expectations, positive postcards are sent home there as well. They're working on some student-teacher building relationships where they've assigned some kiddos with, well, all, all of the teachers have a different child that they just kind of go talk to. It's, nobody knows it's our thing, but they go and talk to them and just make communication so that all students have someone that they can have a contact with throughout the day. Weekly challenges, they're doing some fun things. I think survivor themed, where they, each class, for each grade, they may receive different awards for showing kindness or respect, things like that. And then each month, they do different challenges to award points. And so a lot of fun things going on at the middle school. And the high school, they also do student of the month program. They have some incentives for semester exams being exempt for those of you who have good attendance and are great. They also are giving birthday cards and a little piece of candy for each student and teacher, which I think is a very nice gesture, just to give that little bit of moral support for everyone. So those are some great things happening at each of the schools. One of the things that we're still working on, establishing a common language related to behavior plan. We have had, we do have a list. It has been kind of modified and updated. Two point one, or yeah, twelve, the elementary counselor has come up with a common language for a character education program within our counseling classes that she uses within the elementary schools. And I've sent that to the middle school and high school, and we're kind of work on different things of how we want to implement. Still a work in progress.
Tell us, give me an example of that.
So, one is, I mean, it's your character trait. So it's-
Okay.
Respect, yeah, yep. And we kind of came up with some good terms in how we want to see that shown within the school. Implementing a district-wide character education plan, and this, this one has been, we worked quite a bit on this since I've been here, and there's been a lot of things thrown out over the past couple of years. We did decide for, our elementary counselor is utilizing some elements of the Lions Quest curriculum that had already been, I don't know if it was purchased by the district, if it was given to the district.
We had purchased Lions Quest right prior to COVID beginning. And when we started this initiative on this plan, prior to Mrs. Webster, I'm trying to figure out, how do you, how do you do a character, character education program pre-K through twelfth grade? And it was such a daunting task to try to align that, not only from a vocabulary perspective with that wider range of students, but then also from a scheduling perspective with that wider range of students. And so I know that we've taken off from an elementary perspective to use this Lions Quest. And I know that Dr. Nicewonder and Ms. Martini are looking at some ways on how you can implement some things in a secondary schedule that have some of those meaningful character times during the day. And it's difficult, as I found out firsthand, meeting those needs and finding those times when we can have a common time to meet. So I know they're working at it, and they've got some ideas, but it's going to take kind of a repainting of the schedule to be able to do those things.
And then our culture and climate survey, I think it shows some really great information here that we are meeting some needs, doing great things. In the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three school year, if you, I won't read everything to you, but in all of these areas, we have exceeded the expectations of what we thought we would as far as, are we communicating with parents? Do parents feel like we are meeting the needs of their children educationally? Do our parents feel like we have enough resources to give our students what they need? And in all of those questions, we were very high in, in exceeding the expectations. We would like to see more parents take the survey. In twenty-twenty-one, we had two hundred and eighty-three, and twenty-one, twenty-two, two sixty-seven. It dropped to one seventy-eight this year. So we would like to see more people give us feedback. And then-
You might mention how we solicited that feedback, what we did, parent-teacher conferences.
Yeah, we, we put it out at parent-teacher conferences. I know in our elementary schools, and I think the middle school level, where we get a few more parents in there, we set computers up for parents as they came in to take those surveys to try to get more participation in those. So, and I think that that did help in some areas. We had two surveys going on, so I think that there was a little bit of confusion on which ones they had taken or had not taken. And then these last two here, teachers assign homework that helps, that was a little bit lower. It still met our expectations, so that is definitely a positive. And then students at my child school are well-behaved. Those are a little bit lower, and that could be a lot of different reasons why parents feel that way. And that is part of our culture and community. Are there any questions?
Did we think that the numbers were down on that survey simply because we had a lot of scheduling conflicts on parent-teacher conferences, didn't we?
That, and I think that because there were two, two surveys, if we said, will you please take the survey? Well, I've already taken that survey. So I think that that, both of those-
I'm not a survey taker, so I get the fact that-
I think we sent an app notification.
An app notification.
We sent a couple of app notifications.
On the website.
Put on the website. Tried to-
Test it out for sure.
We'll keep looking at some different ways to make sure, you know, we've talked about trying to combine surveys so that we're taking things out that we don't need. And so we'll keep refining that to try to get some good information. Any other questions from Miss Webster? Okay, so just want to run through a little bit of the survey, or the meeting that we had last month for facilities. Want to open up one of the links from the survey. Mrs. Tucker's not here tonight, but she conducted, put together some surveys for our facilities committee and did an outstanding job with it. And I want to kind of just briefly, I don't know that I do anything briefly, but I want to kind of go over this. The comments section, and you all have a copy of this that you, that you've received, and if you don't have it, I can get you another copy. We're still working our way through the comments section. And you can see, as I scroll through these books, how much the feedback that we received, not only from our committee, but then also teachers. We've received a lot of really good feedback. And so we continue to go through this. We asked them, you know, this one, talking about building the principal's office back upstairs, and where should it be, and what do we do with the old office? And so we've got a lot of good ideas there, and some things that we'll be able to think about as an administrative team as we move forward. Want to talk a little bit about, from a financial perspective, our revenue and how that's distributed. And so went back and did some figuring over the last four years. And you can see here that right now, our federal funds, three percent, state funds, sixty-three percent, local funds, thirty-four percent. When you go back and you look at how that's evolved over time, you can see that federal money has increased, but it's kind of hard to really know because we had a pandemic and we received all that money. So to really kind of know what, what your baseline is really good to think. But what is encouraging is that we continue to see local revenue increase or at least hold true, especially when you look back from eighteen nineteen, and you had thirty-two percent, and last year at thirty-four. So those are encouraging signs. I've got some slides, and you all have a copy of this, and I'm not going to read these to you, about each one of those chargeable accounts that I show you each month, and how those monies are distributed, whether it be through a county distribution or through an enrollment distribution for each school. So those kind of vary from, from your distribution. Want to talk, I talked to the committee that we met with a little bit about how we receive our federal aid and why it's important. Listed five programs here, and those by, by no means are the only five programs that we have received federal money through, but it's apply, approve, spend, and reimburse program. So we're always going to be behind on those claims or on those expenses because you have to apply, your application has to be approved, you have to purchase it, and then the district's reimbursed, okay? So when you look at those purchase orders from previous part of the agenda, and we have the purchase order for Kyler Construction in the general, we've applied, we'll pay, we'll be reimbursed for that purchase order, okay? Determining our state aid and what we receive, really four major areas are local revenue. So what I showed you on that pie chart, that thirty-four percent are enrollment- So what I showed you on that pie chart, that 34% are enrollment and student weights are critical. And then our teacher index, which teacher index looks at years of experience, looks at master's level, doctoral level, and then our location, are we in a rural or urban area? And all of those are small tiny factors that help distribute the money out to every school in the state of Oklahoma. So I want to show you, this is a, they kind of changed our state aid calculation sheet this year. It looks a little bit different for whatever reason. A lot of times you hear districts, or you hear people say, well, this school district's off the formula. There's really not such a thing as being off the formula. There are some that are off the top half, or some that are off the bottom half, but to truly be off the formula, everyone receives a little bit of state aid because most everyone transports students. So everyone's going to get that money. So just to kind of show you, when you hear people talk about off the formula or being off the top half, when you take our, our four chargeables, which is what I show you each month, you can see that last year totaled 4.7 billion approximately. And when you look at what we received in state aid or would have received, this number is higher than this one, so we get to keep our own. So that's why you see zero there. So we get nothing off the top half, okay? So are we receiving state aid? Well, no, we're not here. But then when you look at the bottom half of your formula, we get transportation, so we received 67,000 for transporting students all year. Our salary incentive takes our weighted students, and then it also totals those up with our valuation, and then that gives you what we're going to receive in state aid each year, okay? You can see our penalty that we received for our class size, and so we received over a billion in state aid. One of the things that I wanted to point out to that committee, and I think I'll get to it here in a minute, you receive a million dollars in state aid and you have an estimate of needs of 13 million. So it emphasized the importance, how important all of our sources of revenue from local economy to our federal aid to our state aid, it takes all three of those to help our district function the way it needs to function. So weighted ADM, what that is, is, I talked about that a minute ago, how important that is to be able to determine what kind of money you're going to receive. And so I feel like this is always an important chart to show people because every student is weighted, okay? And that's how they help to determine what kind of money you're going to give. So when you look at your early childhood, you can notice that their weights are at the highest with the younger students. So in theory, when you staff, you want to have your, hire more teachers in your younger grades because that's where you receive your greatest funding, because the weights are the highest. And as you, as you go through these weights, you can see as you move down, as students get into your upper elementary, fourth, fifth, and sixth, you have your lowest weights. When they jump into seventh and eighth grade, for some reason, they believe you need point two more to staff, which no one's been able to explain to me why that happens, but you still get the premise, okay? And so when you, when, when the administrators bring staffing solutions or staffing ideas, we try to as, as much as we can base those off that funding formula so that we staff correctly, that we don't overstaff, but we don't understaff, okay? Move on down.
Is that chart on here?
No, it's probably not. It's probably not, I would have to print.
That's okay, that's okay, I'm just looking for it.
Yeah, it's, it's linked, I probably didn't copy that, but I can get you a copy.
No, no big deal.
Disability factors, every student, we do a child count, Ms. Lovelace does a great job with our child count. Every student and every disability is also weighted. And so then you're also funded through that. And so that's also part of those student or student weights that we receive. Okay, so we looked at this next slide, I wanted to show you some history of our state aid. You can see that our state aid has increased each year. We hope it continues to increase. One of the things, that, that right side's the same thing, so that's nothing new. When you look at our state aid, one of the potentials that I think is good for our district is we received a good amount of state aid this year, and we didn't, we weren't able to staff to where we could get a higher weight for pre-K. Okay, so pre-K's one of your highest weights, and if we can add that class back, that will help in some of that funding. And so hopefully, we can do that, finding those certified teachers in early childhood. Expenses for payroll, I felt like this was a good bit of information to share. You can look at our last few years of payroll. You can see our payroll expenses, I think I've read through some research, most schools are about 85%. So we are right in that area with our payroll. 83%, 70%, 17% expenses. Tracking our budget, I've showed you this before, and with all of our funds, and so this is not really a new, but I want to kind of look at the expense part of it. When you look at our expenditures, we talked about state aid, and we receive a million dollars, and we project to spend nine in salary. And so, you know, that's why when you start looking at things, you really have to look at your local economy, what kind of state aid you're going to get, you just have to look at all those things when you make any kind of financial decision, even when it comes to staff. If you look at our general fund right now, and you look at our collections and where we're at, our collections continue to be very positive. And I think that will reflect later in our agenda on some opportunities for our staff that the board feels like we're going to be able to do. And so those are all positive things, but still have to be mindful, as we all know, during COVID, things change really quickly economically, and, and the world sometimes dictates our local, our local economy. Expenses, thought I would just show this, it's kind of a chart that details what our payroll has looked like, or what our employment has looked like with our enrollment, which has been pretty unchanged. I don't know if you remember, a few weeks ago when we started school, we were close to 1,050 students, and you look at where we're at now, we're at 1,039. So we've already kind of gone back to where we normally are in years past. One of the things that many times you'll hear is class sizes, you know, my class, what is my class size? My class size is either too large or too small. If you look at our elementary class sizes, on average, they're 20. If you look at our middle school class sizes, on average, they're 12 students per class. If you look at core classes, math, reading, science, social studies, they're 17. If you look at high school, they're 11. If you look at core classes, math, social studies, science, language arts, they're 18. So we have very good class sizes for our teachers. We know we've got some areas we need to address, especially our kindergarten, 97 students in that class. And so we know we've got to find some early childhood teachers to address that moving forward. But for the most part, we've done a good job there. As you look through these district priorities, we have already begun having some conversations with architectural firms about some of our issues, have not signed any contracts or made any commitments at this point. The only thing we're working towards, which you'll see later in our agenda, is to do some repairs to roofing. We're still trying to coordinate and come up with a full facilities plan for the district moving forward. Little update for the committee on status of our current projects, cafeteria project, as I mentioned earlier, we'll be doing a bid opening there, HVAC gymnasium, anticipate the start days in March, and then paving projects, still working on details of how that would look. That project is really dictated on what happens with our high school office, and moving that up here changes potentially what you do with the paving projects in the snake drive in the north apartment. Also wanted to provide some building fund information, our collections, we went ahead and gave a projection for 22, 23 school year. You can see our building fund collections have been strong, very conservatively, we're not going to collect as, as much as we would in previous years. You can see our building fund expenses, when we project those out, we've been able to do some things in our facility. So you have our art room, and then we took a break, and then you'll see our HVAC will be another area that will make some capital improvement. So obviously, as we talked to that committee, and we did these surveys, and we got this information, and then, as we all know, school constantly evolves, and we've seen a really push for some more security with our schools. And some of the, some of the things that we have currently maybe aren't as adequate as they need to be. And so we talked about enclosed playgrounds, door locks, mantraps, walkie-talkies, all of those things that are expenses that maybe we didn't look at initially from a capital improvement should be considered as we move forward. And so administratively, and with the board's input, we've got, we've got to look at all those things that pop up. IT, when you look at infrastructure of IT, that's changing, cybersecurity, all of those things. And so we have to consider those as we plan as a team how we move forward. When you use your building fund to do capital improvement and address these areas, you always have to be really conservative, and we've done some great things with our building fund. And this board has consistently done that throughout the years. It makes it difficult when you use building fund to do these because you always have to maintain the proper staffing level. You have to be able to make sure that you provide the quality of education that you need to. And so as we move forward, the conversation is, well then, how do we do these things? And as we talked as a group and discussed, one of the possibilities is to look into, how do you lease purchase to maximize the amount of cash we have on hand and still do some improvements? And so that is something that we'll continue to look at, investigate, report back to the board, what, what a lease purchase would look like, what's that going to cost us? Will that be the best bang for our buck? Outside of that, looking at a bond issue or a lease purchase, no matter how you finance it, if you continue to do out of our building fund, which has been great, and I don't want to minimize that, but the process will be slower and we'll see priorities change each year, which is okay, but, but you'll, it'd be much more difficult to make those, I don't really know how to term it, maybe sweeping capital improvement changes all at one time, which again, is not a negative, but it would just make your process slower, okay? Couple other things, considerations, we mentioned the Dr. Austin Quinn Trust, which has been a real blessing to our district. It's going to provide an opportunity for our golf teams and also help with the purchase of vehicles that can be used by all students. So that's a real big positive that will help our budgeting. We also have a donor that's interested in some beautification projects across our district, and so we're going to be working with them, and we are able to finalize some of those details, bring that to the board. Wanted to mention wind farm settlements, that has been something that's in the news a lot. And what, fortunately for our district, we have nine windmills in our district, those windmills are all centrally assessed. And so none of those are locally assessed, which means they have all been paying their taxes in what they've been assessed. The locally assessed windmill farms, they were given their valuation with tax credits included. And so it's been ruled unconstitutional for tax credits to be a part of your valuation. So all of those districts that have those windmill farms, it's cut their valuations many times in half of what they were. So we're very fortunate there. I have a couple of, just some information that I maybe just summarized regarding principal's office, superintendent's office, and then paving and parking comments and suggestions. One of the things that was brought up in that committee was making a green space and a park. And so another comment was adding some more handicapped accessible parking along the northeast side of our gym for, for our patrons. And so as I mentioned earlier, I think the paving, I don't think, paving parking project is a working project, working, working project as we continue on. Not going to go through these, I know I've taken a lot of time, but these are the survey results and how everyone prioritized those results, so you can review that. And I can answer any questions next month at our board meeting that you might have over these results. What you'll see is I took out what's been prioritized and what we've already started to work on, okay? You'll, you'll notice those have been, have been taken out. So you can see there's been a lot of things that we're talking about and planning, which is a real positive, that everyone appears to be on the same page as we move forward with some of these capital improvements across our district. Any, any questions that you might have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or next month. That's a lot of information for you to digest and look over, so please feel free to ask me any questions.
Would it be, I don't know the protocol on this, but when, could we look at setting a time when maybe we could come and look at this information of this group again and the principals, to just maybe a special meeting of some sort, in that we start to just really talk about strategies and, and start to prioritize, but then really start to really prioritize them. And it seems like most of it is maintenance issues, just doing things to our existing buildings, which we do need to do. Those are great, and we've got to do that, and we've kind of given, we've kind of now not decided maybe any new construction is probably something that's down the road or not at all, which makes sense. But I was, I was looking at this, this one right here, which is really good, but a lot of that just is roof and leaks and all those things, and how could we prioritize, how could we put those all together? How could we put what, maybe get a bids, semi bids on what all that's going to cost, and then start to do, this is what we're going to do year one, year two, year three, year four, till we get all of these leaks? I mean, most, a lot of that's just water issues, which is terrible for now. And then just pull Lincoln over here by itself possibly and say, let's get someone to look at Lincoln, and what is the dollar figure to fix Lincoln? And then what are we going to do about that, if we're going to do anything about it? And so, does that, does that make sense? That makes sense to me, anyway. You've got a lot of good numbers here on what you've already got prices on, which is really good. You know, but air conditioning units, AC is air, air conditioning, right? I thought it was a little more sensible. But I'd like, of course, to at some point, start to just pull everything that's kind of water related, everything that's oil related, everything then that maybe is high school, high school related, get some what it's going to cost, and then this, this group, start to figure out how we can prioritize, where we're going to start. We've got a lot of good things going here, which is great. And a lot of that's been new. I mean, art, the gym, it's new stuff. Cafeteria, really is a lot of new construction as well as remodeling, paving. Every time basketball season starts back up again, we hit that rumbling, don't we, about paving? It's great. The committee's done an outstanding job. The committee, I think the community's been really excited to be included and to be heard, and as well, I think the teachers as well, they have done a nice job. So those are just some thoughts, but I, I don't know if anybody's got time to get together. I don't know when I could fulfill that request that I just asked for. But I think we're going to have to make time if we're going to be able to get past this, these lists, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Bealy now. He, last month, presented, gave you all some handouts on OSTP data, and so, yeah. He, last month, presented, gave you all some handouts on OSTP data, and so, yeah. So I'll get this information up. So, if you look at the first line here, what I've, what I've tried to do is give you a year-to-year comparison of where we were last year to this year. There's not a previous test for third grade ELA or math, so that's not comparing this cohort to itself following year. So this is, this is two separate cohorts. So, coming out of COVID, and I was, I guess I was a little surprised by this, but COVID had the biggest impact on early childhood kids than, than they did in the others. And I can't remember where I read it, but I saw somewhere else that that was kind of a national trend. Our baseline in these areas in math, and this would have been 18, 19 when we, the year before we did the strategic plan, our baseline in math was 78% of third graders were proficient, and 62, or 68% were proficient in ELA. So we, we did see a drop in those areas coming out of COVID. So, but we are seeing an increase where we're climbing back up there where we should be as, as far as ELA goes. If you go to fourth grade, from fourth grade on, this is a cohort compared to themselves the previous year. So this 43% proficient in fourth grade reading, that same group of kids was 38% in third grade. So, this number and this number, those are the same kids right there. So what we're, we're, we are seeing is, you know, starting to recover a little bit. This was a, a bright light for us in math, fourth grade. 60% of our kids were proficient as compared to 51% the year before when they were in third grade. That's the first time since the strategic plan that we've actually hit one of our strategic plan goals in any of those areas. And so, that begs the question, well, why, why did that group go up? And I've talked to Mrs. Webster and talked to a few of the teachers, and they just felt like this is a very good mathematically minded, minded group, and I, I think we need to look a little deeper because I think there probably is something a little bit more to that. But we saw fifth grade actually proficiency drop in both math and ELA as compared to their fourth grade scores. Same thing in sixth. And then seventh grade, we saw slight increases from 27% proficient up from 25, and 30 up from 25 in math. Those are probably one or two kids increasing that. And then we go to eighth grade, 32%, that, that was slightly up, and then we are slightly down in math at 10% proficient in grade math. But that is, those are worrisome numbers, obviously. And we, we've been spending quite a bit of time with ICLE, the International Center for Leadership and Education, the last three years, and we've been working with teachers about prioritizing standards and then creating a common formative assessment so that we see if our tier-one instruction is actually making the mark. But if we, if it's not, then we need to go back and, and change something. So in this, this first bar graph, this will be your, the same scores, this is ELA. The blue is the number of kids, or percentage of kids that are below proficient. The red is the strategic plan goal for 21, 22. And then the gold is our proficiency rate. So, as far as, as changing instruction, Sharon Dean and Tyler Bridges, when they did the strategic plan with us three, four years ago, you know, they told us that it takes three to five years to change instruction, to change these numbers. And then we get interrupted with COVID, and so, you know, we're probably at year, I think we're year four of the plan or three, and so we still have a lot of work to do. The part that always troubles me every time we look at this, and every year it, it looks very, very similar, is that we see this, this sort of declining trend in our proficiency levels. And those proficiency levels are indicative of where we're headed with ACT scores when they get to high school, which is a predictor of college success. And so there, I did put a little bit of literature in your packet with regard to ACT. Part, part of it is ACT's information about what benchmarks really indicate, and then the second part is a study that was done by the University of Chicago with regard to what actually drives those ACT scores up. If you'll scroll to the next page, Mr. Argo. So this will be our math, math scores. So we were hoping our third grade would be at 82%. They were 51%. But we do have that shining light there in the fourth grade math, and at 60% of them being proficient. And so, we've maybe made a little dent there. But then you see this troubling trend once again, where we're, we're headed downward when we get to the eighth grade, out of about 10% of 77 kids were proficient. So, that is worrisome, the things that we, we, we think we're headed in the right direction with, with the professional development, but what we know is that professional development, it's great, and we've done a lot of great professional development, but how do you transfer into classroom practice? That's always the key. And Mrs. Lovelace and I have done quite a bit of soul searching about that, and we feel like instructional coaching is part of that, which ICLE, we brought, brought their people in to, to help us instructional coach teachers. And Mrs. Lovelace will be doing a project with our social studies teachers here and at the middle school, where she's going to actually use an instructional coaching model to help see if we can get better transfer. I worked with Mrs. Gore and Mrs. Nichols at the middle school, and then we also have the literacy project, Literacy for All Project at Lincoln that we're doing, that is really geared towards what we're talking about doing here. So, I would suggest to you that if you went across the western department, looked at any district, you would see very similar trends. And so, we said, well, you know, we're right there at the state average. But the state average, I mean, like, we're 49th in the nation, as our, our governor continues to tell us. So, we don't want to be at the state average, we want to exceed that state average. And if we continue to do the same things, we'll get the same results, and so it's all about trying to change that, that model and that instructional model that we're using. So, that's not to say that our teachers aren't working hard. Our teachers work hard. I mean, they do. I, I think it has more to do with what we culturally believe school's supposed to be and how, how it's supposed to look. And so, we want to change that. So, that's where we're at right now. That's not a rosy picture, but do you guys have any questions?
What can we do to help?
Well, that's a really good question. You know, I think we, we still have to prioritize some funding to, to help track teachers. We've spent three years with ICLE, and it's been a good three years. We just haven't seen the needle move yet. I think as an administrative staff, we, we have to continue to get into classrooms and monitor implementation. And I think when we look at the strategic plan, we have a lot of, a lot of good initiatives, but I think where we've missed the bow probably is the monitoring aspect to make sure that those things are being implemented. And that's not to say that, I mean, let's just be honest, everyone over here knows that every day is a busy, busy day, and when you have your list of things to do, there are days where your list doesn't get done because you, you're taking care of all the other things that you have to take care of. But I think we need to continue to monitor for implementation and, and, you know, get out there with our teachers, maybe teach with our teachers some, team teach with them. I've found that to be pretty rewarding with, when I came up to work with Coach Gore and Mrs. Nichols, so. That, that's one aspect. Other questions?
Wouldn't it be fun, I think, to track those fourth graders?
Yeah.
Let's watch them for the next two, three years. Let's see what they do. We like, we like, we see that they, something there is right, and let's see if they trend like what we're seeing the rest of our kids trend as they get, which I would say middle school kids probably trend that way a little bit everywhere. But are we going to be satisfied if we would stay level?
I personally wouldn't.
Well, okay. But is there steps of satisfac- satisfaction? I can't say it.
You're saying from this point?
Of being happy?
Yeah, heck, I would be, yeah, I'd be pretty thrilled about that if we didn't get down to that eighth grade number.
Okay. So if, if for some reason we thought, you know, let's start, and I'm just talking, okay? So forgive me if you're offended. You know, if we, if we first looked like we could just stay level, how, what are our class sizes doing? Are our class sizes too big? Do we need more aides? Do we need more tutors? Do we need community to come in? Do we need to quit teaching math seventh hour? Do we need to do some things that logically seem a little bit like maybe we could help fix those? And I, I truly mean that in the kindest sense of word. You know, we can fix leaks in the building, and we can do parking lots, but if we send them out of here and they're not ready to do math, or can't read, or write a complete sentence, it feels about parking lots. So, I want to help, we all do.
I, I think that my colleagues over here would, would agree that attendance is also a big component. When we have seen, you know, coming out of COVID, I mean, we were really, and it was, that was the recommendation from everybody, was that, you know, don't, don't send your kids sick, and we don't want to spread this thing. Well, I think we've probably had some that have gotten used to that a little bit, and the discussion Mr. Argo and I had earlier today, that crone caps and tism is something that every school in Oklahoma is fighting right now. And, and we know, you know, the reality is that our teachers want to do a great job for these kids, but they have to be there to do it for us to do that job. So, attendance is, is a definite component of it.
Well, I don't think anybody wants to sit here and say that it's, it's one person's fault. And if the teachers don't understand that we're with them 100%, we can't do it without them as a community and as parents and families or whatever, and at no point should they feel like the, the weight of the world is on their shoulders. We, we've got to help them.
Right.
And how can we help them? And unless, unless you guys tell us, we don't know. We just don't. So, thank you. Appreciate all of you. It's, it's a, it's a deep problem around the country, and even though I do think maybe against, side by side with our peers, we want to win more ballgames, we want to win more, we want our, our chart to look better here.
I agree.
Than our, than our peers.
And I'll tell you that our teachers, they, they want to work this out.
I know they do.
We've talked to a lot of them.
I know they do.
They're just as upset, and they want to do, they want to do good.
I know, so I know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beely.
Thank you. It's a lot of work, yeah, it's a lot of work, I appreciate it. I don't even know where we're at. I don't know, six?
Yes.
Okay. 6.1, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the revised extra duty salary schedule for fiscal year 23.
Okay, if you'll open up the attachment, you'll see the addition of multimedia coordinator, and you'll see the range, salary range set there for that position. As we'll see with the next agenda item, Mr. Eckhart's done a really outstanding job working with Coach Foster and really his class and his students to create advertising, to create videos, and walk the halls of high school, those kids are creating posters, recognize for one act, state qualifiers. And that class is continuing to expand and grow. I think we're going to see some different things that they are going to offer with our live streaming this spring through that class, and so, really want to recognize him for that, that extra time and effort that he is making. And so, that's the reason for the addition to our extra duty salary schedule.
Make a motion we approve the revised extra duty salary schedule as referenced in 6.1.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.2, discussion with possible board action vote to approve, is that what it is? Extra duty salary assignments.
First specific issue. Yes, so if you'll open up that attachment, you will see we have a change there with Mr. Eckhart, and he has started at the bottom of that salary range schedule with $2,000 for multimedia coordinator. You will also see in addition to that also Brandon Ellis with $500 as assistant basketball coach for our sixth grade. Really appreciate Coach Hooper. It's been large numbers, which is, which is great, but it adds some additional assistance to him when they travel to the late games. So I would recommend approval of agenda item 6.2. Move to approve item 6.2.
Second motion.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item 6.3, discussion with possible board action vote to approve a professional development stipend for all full-time employees that attend the safety training rooms.
We mentioned earlier the improvements and the growth financially and economically for the district. We want to accomplish twofold. One, to provide some professional development for our staff that is pertinent and something that's useful, but two, reward them and thank them for the work that they have done, not just this year, but, but over the years with our district. Want to mention to the board that this board over the last six years has approved over 2.5 million in extra duty stipends that cost our district 10,000 a person. And you can go to a lot of different school districts across the state of Oklahoma, and you won't find that, that kind of commitment to its people. And so, I would say thank you because I think that is a part of, a big, a big part of who we are and a big part of who you are as a board. Wanting excellence, but also serving our people and rewarding them through this stipend. So I would make the recommendation that we would approve a $500 stipend for all full-time staff to attend our active shooter training.
Make the motion that we approve 6.3.
Let's go ahead and put that dollar amount, if we'll do the dollar amount in that motion. I think we need to do that, so it needs to be for $500.
$500, yeah.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Item 6.4, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following school board policy FE.
Okay. Agenda item 6.4, we're required to bring this to the Board of Education quarterly. The second page of FE has our capacity numbers. These capacity numbers are not changed. We have kept those capacity numbers each semester, or, excuse me, each quarter. I want to draw your attention to the, to the board, the active panel. If you look at our enrollment tab, we keep this highlighted each month, and apparent when they go to look at enrollment, they can also view the policy, but also our capacity limits. And so, we, we update this quarterly. We're required to submit a state report each quarter, and this shows the availability for transfers. So you can see that when we set these capacity limits for 80, we're 17 over our capacity, which required the higher hiring of teachers assistants, but we've gone through and we've done that for each one of our grade levels. There are no questions, I would recommend approval of agenda item 6.4, our student transfer policy.
So move.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
6.5, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the 2023 inter-local agreement with Circuit Engineering District Number Eight.
This is a yearly inter-local agreement that we use to work with this Circuit Engineering District. They've come out and helped look at our parking lot, width of it, parking spaces, do we have it mapped out correctly? They provide some other services, and so I would recommend approval of this inter-local agreement with Circuit Engineering District Number Eight.
So move. Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Item number 6.6, discussion with possible board action vote to approve an out-of-state travel request.
travel request from ALBA and FA sponsor Randy Nation for students to attend the Kansas Beef Expo Livestock Judging Contest in Hudson, Kansas on December the 9th, 2022.
So this out-of-state travel request, Mr. Nation was able to take his students over the past couple of years, good opportunity for our livestock judging team, and I would recommend approval of this agenda item.
I make the motion that we approve 6.5.
Second. 6.6.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Can we vote these all together?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
6.7, discussion with possible board action vote to elect the following members of the Board of Directors of the Oklahoma Public School Investment Interlocal Cooperative as referenced in 6.7.1, 6.7.2, 6.7.3, and 6.7.4.
Again, a routine agenda item that in the past this board has approved through a yes, and so I would recommend approval for this agenda item.
I make the motion that we elect the following members that have submitted that they're interested in serving on the Oklahoma Public School Investment Interlocal Cooperative.
Second. Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item 6.8, discussion with possible board action vote to approve a contract with Corbin Mertz, Haney Architects, and Interior Design for the ALBA Public Schools Roof Replacement.
We mentioned this earlier in our discussions regarding facilities. Corbin Mertz and Haney will be working on this project after reviewing all the specifications from our insurance claim. Corbin Mertz and Haney receive 6% of the construction cost, and so obviously we don't have that number until that is put out to bid. They will be reviewing the scope of the project from our insurance recovery and then the current state of our roofs. If you look at Exhibit A in that attachment, it details some of that work and where they'll be looking at that work for each building. If there are no questions, I would recommend approval of this contract with Corbin Mertz and Haney for ALBA School Roof Replacement.
Have they provided their services for other area schools around here?
Yeah, so they've worked with Chisholm, they've worked with Winoka, they've worked with Pioneer. They were also the key architect on the Leonardo's in downtown Enid, and so, yes, to answer your question, Hannah.
And they use local materials?
Yes, so one of the, as we've been talking about, kind of estimating what this potentially could cost, they are reaching out to local roofing companies in the Enid area.
A lot of things on here on the scope are things that align with the recommendations from facility.
Correct, and, and from what our insurance, coverage from our insurance. We'll have some warranty work also. There are some areas of our roof currently that will be covered under warranty, and so they're going to help facilitate using that warranty as we go through the repair and replacement. Any other questions?
Move to approve the contract with Corbin Mertz, Haney, Architecture and Interior Design for ALBA Schools Roof Replacement.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Any new business?
No, ma'am.
All right. Poked executive session to discuss staff negotiations and the 2022-23 AEA contract, 25 local state statutes, 307 D2. Vote to convene into executive session?
So move.
Second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.